Call this meeting back to order. Denise, next on the agenda.
Okay, well, again, there's something that I think about. Uh, we, through our case, you have a new kind of, they're doing the notice to them, commissioners. My last one, you were doing in the office, it'll be February 24th, use a real payday. Instead of sharing with the commission, I would like to discuss a direct introduction. As my mom, well, we, same home, I'll be back and forth to visitor. Regular basis, so. This would include some actual office time, but. Right now, my office is kind of focused during the 40, studying up the equalization needs. I deal with. Put the county in a down position, turn it just up and beyond. And I've worked hard with this part, so continue. Burn some light. And like to offer what I can do more remotely. I would still stay on this bolt of authority. Doing those things. I did hire an assistant, by the way. Yesterday, something, and she had put in her Saturday, so that would be with. Green Huber. And Stasberg in. Well, I would rather them to ask, but.
You're from H, Stasberg?
Yep, Stasberg area.
Yeah, she's really from H, but she lives in Lenoir.
Or.
My daughter-in-law.
Okay.
So you're saying, instead of her working eighteen and a half, she'd be working more like twenty-five, thirty?
Could, it's an option.
So we're looking at, yeah, adding more hours on too.
That's why, it's just an option to be looked at, at this point. So with the idea of me working remotely, um, you know, if anybody comes, walks into the office, I can set up, um, we're instantly connected through a Teams. Um, so she can just box up the other, get a screen in my office, then I can work with the person that's there. Um, you know, her and I both would be, can be instant messaging, I could see her screen, um, for training purposes. So I think the world, how it's evolving and all these different technology options that are out there, I can still complete her training. Um, her first day would be the 21st. And so I would have that meet with her.
Is she in the background?
What's that?
Experienced background?
Yes, she does. Um, she does have experience with, um, you know, the basic Microsoft products. Um, she does have a history of customer service and, um, and office tasks. I don't know how you want to shortly put that, she's been doing these roles before. So she should be pretty easy, I'm picking them up. It's just gonna be, of course, um, picking up the new software. Um, you know, most people aren't familiar with the software I use in my office at random, but, um, I don't see any issue with her picking those up. She's excited, wants to come on board and, um, work together to make this a positive thing. Um, as I put in my letter, um, that, you know, get through equalization times, I look back for those meetings, um, and, uh, we can really make this happen as a more positive thing versus just dead and noticed and walking away. I don't really want to leave under those circumstances. So.
So if you're leaving, when you're leaving, are you gonna be employed somewhere else?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope.
So it's not gonna be conflicting with another job then?
Nope, I'm not even starting to look for any other work, um, to pick up or start during that time. If you were to get somebody hired and you start thinking that maybe you need me less, but still work half days maybe for training or something, we can work through that as it happens. Um, but right now, I'm leaving it dedicated, still my time dedicated to here.
Would you be considered still on full time here then?
Yep.
You would?
I would still maintain my same office, or my same hours here. Um, and, uh, be able to do that, yes, that does propose some risks. Uh, the people wanted to not be doing work when they're supposed to be doing work, but, um, that is one of the trust things I have to come about. There's probably tech ways of being able to show whether I'm active or not, but I don't know that kind of stuff, but. It is a, a trust relationship.
Well, the big thing is, is like, I know when Sarah left, she had left for another employment opportunity, but she had left the door open to help kind of cross-train the new person if necessary. Well, then when we hired Denise, she came with experience and credentials and. So we really, we didn't need to really, I mean, she's still, I think, making, communicated with Sarah on some things, but it wasn't to the extent that we originally had thought. But if you hired someone who was still was going through a big process, then at least she kind of left behind the opportunity to help out, at least transition, because the trouble you have right now is in Denise's office, you're already starting probably prepare for equalization to a point, which is gonna start, I believe, April, start meeting some of the early stuff. So I mean, you're not far away from it, so that's. What she's offering is a hybrid solution where she's not just leaving, you know, but, you know, we could, I mean, we could start advertising right away for that position, and if you find someone that's, you know, feels they can handle it, somebody's maybe coming with experience who could do it, then you have a smooth transition there. And if you bring on somebody who maybe doesn't have all the credentials and all the training, then at least Denise would be available to help, at least get through. I mean, equalization is kind of like the Super Bowl for her office. I mean, once that's over, then it's, there's still assessing and obviously still work, but the big picture is equalization. And that's, and that's where, you know, if Denise was leaving after equalization, it maybe wouldn't even be such a big deal, but leaving before equalization, that's where the hybrid options, at least. The options, so. I don't know if you really have to make a decision today, I think the main thing is that it's being offered. And then you can go forward if the decision is, is when to start advertising for that position. So if you want to start advertising, I mean, if she's basically given us her notice, that's February 24th, you know when she's basically gonna be officially done?
I don't want to be officially, don't mind.
Well, I know, but I, the hybrid option is kind of a last resort. I mean, it's not ideal, nobody, you know, it's not very good practice to have people working really outside of the courthouse like that. So while the hybrid option is better than no option at all, I think the proper option would probably be to advertise the position as soon as possible, if you find a candidate. You know, if they do need some cross-training, if you're open to helping them out. You know, and I think even with Sarah's agreement, there was like an agreed-upon wage, and it, you know, it was more than, you know, it was like, she was helping out two days a week for the first couple of weeks, then we were gonna pay her like an outside contractor. And if there wasn't a need for that, if there was only just a quick phone call about, hey, where are you keeping these papers? And stuff like that, then it was kind of just done, so.
Well, I would need a little bit of decision made today as far as, uh, whether the hybrid or the remote is going to happen past February 24th. Otherwise, I need to be looking for employment. Well, so that, that's why I'm here today, bringing it up to you guys, uh, you know.
That hybrid thing, I mean, most people want to talk to somebody personally, I mean, raise the pace. I think, maybe I'm wrong, you know, but.
You know, there's a, there's an extent to that. Um, a lot of my huge priority, need to be in the office, has been, you know, the past month, two months. You know, so, um, getting through those farm residence exemptions and homestead credits, you know, now that, that volume is down to a trickle. You know, I think with proper notice and signage about, um, you know, whether I say every Friday, I will be physically in the office, but I can set up meetings anytime, um, during that other time. And that's where I think that, man, there's sort of a, a nice tool that, um, you know, we're not teaching people how to get into a Zoom call or a Teams call. She can just go turn it on for them at my desk, you know? Um, so it, it's not a.
I guess they did it during COVID, I guess.
Yep, and more and more, when I did go out and look at jobs, you know, um, you know, there's more and more jobs that are turning remotely, customer service, um, you know, call-ins, people are doing it from home and, um, the employers are embracing it because it's giving, you know, there's studies to prove whichever way you want to look at it, but, um, you know, increased productivity, um, for people, a greater dedication to the job, you know, some of those things, less overhead, um, for the business, but. And this is, I'm not trying to talk you into doing this permanently, you know? It's, it's just a transition period. Uh, so, things can be maintained and.
Well, I guess in my opinion, I'd probably have to consult our HR consultant and probably look at the handbook too, as far as if there's any requirements for some of that stuff. I don't know if making the decision right here at the moment is probably the best way to do it.
You know, the thing is, you know, even if we opened it up now right away, it'd kind of take us until we go to we get somebody in here.
Well, it's gonna take a little bit of time, no doubt about it.
And I think we should open it up.
I mean, and I don't, I'm not really totally against the hybrid idea, you know, because a smooth transition is the number one goal, but I don't, you know, I.
That's only I was looking at, you know, if we keep running till we get somebody in here. Because we got nobody to really cover right now.
Well, I guess if you want to make a decision, you guys can, or whatever you want to think. I, I feel like I should probably, in my personal opinion, I'd like to consult our HR consultant and just ask for her opinion.
Yeah.
You know, there's, I mean, because the other thing too is even the employee handbook, I don't know what back and forth, forward to work, you know, with, with a proper way of, you know, resignations and, you know, I feel like she's given us adequate time, appreciate that and all that, but are we honoring our handbook and stuff too? Because I don't want to, I don't want to just be violating the handbook or going about creating precedencies where now all of a sudden we have a lot of people working outside of the courthouse because of stipulations and stuff. I mean, everything's got different reasons, but, uh.
The one thing I just don't want is to have to wait till next commissioner meeting.
Sure.
To find out what's gonna happen, you know? Um, so if somebody can be appointed for leave to act on behalf and be able to.
Well, I guess the main question that was here is, do we have a problem with a hybrid, right, with our, you know, kind of keeping her on, at least until we find someone? Because if, I mean, if we don't have a problem with that, then the main thing would be, I guess, the recommendation would be to just consult HR, and if she doesn't have a problem with that, or finds an alternate way to kind of do it. If it's, if it's germane to what we've talked about, we can probably go forward.
Right.
And if it's just kind of considered a no-no, or if it violates our employee, then we'll probably have to have some kind of special meeting or coordinate some, some other way, so. Would you guys have a problem with me making that decision once we, I mean, if it's germane to what we agreed to? Like, what she says is okay, and follows the handbook, and the HR lady thinks it's a good idea, or at least reasonable? Ken?
Yeah, I just assumed you, you know, what she has to say, but I'd like to have it get it open as soon as possible, too.
Sure, well, like I said, I will consult Pam at the earliest convenience and just make sure that we are following our proper procedures and not missing something. And if, if it seems like it's allowable and it's something we're gonna do at least in the short term, until we fill the position, then I'll make that decision, I'll coordinate with you.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, sounds perfect, that's all I can ask for.
Okay.
I appreciate you guys' time and.
How about the abatement?
Oh, yep, then I've got an abatement.
Kind of sounded like you were making a closing argument, so I wanted to make sure we get the abatement done, so. Okay. What do we want in that here?
Just a farm residence exemption that, um, she's applying for it for this tax year yet. Um, you know, most of the time, I've been pushing back on her, saying that it is an option around, but, you know, I put back on whether it was their choice not to come in and apply sooner on their own, or ignoring the things that need to be done. Um, but she goes doing it in good faith, um, you know, that I supported putting in an abatement for this tax year right now. Um, otherwise, I've said, if you want to process an abatement, then ask, you can. Um, and that's sort of the stance I was doing with it. So this one, I do feel should be approved for the 2022 tax year.
Good. You folks that are here for the ARPA Working Group, is it possible to push you back till like 2:30 or 3:00, or is that a major conflict?
I've got no problem with that.
Michelle's hesitating.
I have a 3:30, I'm just saying, I have a 3:30, go 2:30, that's mine.
Okay. That way we can keep some of these other agenda items on the move then? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, great.
Okay, so we're gonna move the ARPA discussion till.
Normally, we don't ship those around too much, unless there's some.
Yeah, no, I guess for the sake of time or.
Do you want me to supply copies for everybody when you?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's not a huge amount, I guess so, for the sake, or for time here, entertain a motion to approve table or deny this abatement? Motion to approve table or deny the abatement? Got to do something, guys. Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Eboli, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Culver, is any more discussion on the abatement? Not hearing any, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abatement approved.
Thank you for your guys' time.
Okay. You're up next.
Okay, so the discussion will be in a presentation of two petitions. One is to petition to vacate alleyway in Tendik from Washington Avenue on the east side to Tendik Road on the west side in Block Nine. Petition two is to vacate Washington Avenue in Tendik from Seventy Second Street in southeast, north side to Cap Street, south side.
Uh, so first off, what's, what's the reasoning for the petitions, Mike?
Well, the reason for the petition is, is twofold. One is, uh, you know, I've seen people driving, driving around that Washington Avenue is low and easy, just looking, and, you know, and I mean, I don't know who they are, they're, they're not. We get a bunch of older people that were born and raised there, coming through, looking around, but, you know, these guys are, they're, they're over, they're thirty-something. You know, and it just, it just reaches me, you know, deeps, is what I think, of course, you know, maybe on parallel, I don't know. But they don't have any business driving through that road anyway. There's been problems with thievery in that area before. And nobody uses the road. And it would give, it would also give me a, a little more setback for a building I want to build. Right now, from the county road to the Tendik road, to the, I think it's Tendik, that's all, it's all blocked off anyway. I mean, you got that part, it's all blocked off. Gerard has, you know, machinery and stuff in there, he's had problems with thieves in his junkyard. And, you know, he's blocked it off with machinery and pipe and logs and whatever, so you, you can't even drive on it. And it would just be to that corner down there. Yep, and then it just keeps going straight, goes right off that corner, goes all the way to the end of the, the sub-development. And that part of the road isn't even there either.
Well, the, all the map has shown us how the town is plotted, even though there's no road physically built there, that's how they plotted it, so that's how I have to map it out like this, so.
And even though Tendik is unorganized, the county still has to kind of honor that plan, not, so the lots and the, the easement for, right away for the streets and avenues and all that's still planned.
Well, it's my understanding that the county has, all the roads are county roads now.
Right. Yeah. Joe, is this the right way to petition, or is this?
Well, I was reviewing this, the, um, the first petition, I do believe, you can grant, so. What the Century Code requires essentially is that, um, the petitioner, Mr. Dear Western here, needs to, uh, basically lay out a petition that describes the road and, and, you know, which, which is to be discontinued. Um, it needs to be accompanied by signatures, at least six individuals who live in the vicinity, is what it states. And then it creates a notice requirement that once we receive the petition, we're supposed to, as a county, provide some sort of notice of the date and time that we're going to consider this petition, which we didn't do, but the Century Code does allow you to dispense with that notice requirement if at least seventy percent of the individuals, um, who have an ownership interest alongside the road have signed that petition. The first petition, I'm looking at that, appears that it's been signed by all the folks that would be, be able to receive notice. So that would be to close Washington Avenue, running north and south. Um, the big landowners, or people who owned the majority of the land, would, would be the petitioner and, and Mr. Sather and Mr. Nagle, I believe, as well. Um, the second petition is for the alleyway running east and west between the petitioner's lots and then continuing west, um, where other folks own some land over there. And in that case, I think we have seventy percent of the signatures that we require. However, if you look at the 2407, uh, 11, it does state that the notice, notice needs to be provided personally to individuals who did not sign the petition. So I think on that second petition, because if you look at the previous subsection of the Century Code, the notice is, is, when they describe the notice, it's separate from the petition. The notice comes from the, from, um, from the county, where we tell the individual who did not sign the date and time that we would consider that petition. So that would be for those lots on the southwest corner, right there, a little bit further west, I think, yep. So the Birdsville, there's no, there's no signature there, so there's no evidence that they received notice of the date and time that we were gonna consider this specific petition. So if they wanted to contest the petition, uh, they didn't have the opportunity to be here, so. I would say maybe, maybe we should give them notice for next month that we consider that alleyway petition. If you guys wanted to act on the first petition, I think you're more than, uh, able to act on that petition.
Don't we have to have a public hearing to close roads now?
Well, you dispense with that requirement when all the parties sign on that.
Who's the guy on the side of the town there? Is it Birdsville, the guy?
And he's against it.
And the county goes in and they can open that up, do they not?
Up to the house.
Up to the house, right? But that's not, that's not any of the roads that we're talking about.
No, he's talking about the alleyway.
Does he need access through that alleyway?
The alleyway is between Birdsville's lots, right where he's doing the thing. And it runs, it runs for that, you know, it'd be, it would have been two blocks worth.
So does he need access there? Does he need access through that alleyway?
No, because he, he owns the land on the corner, you know, and he, that's where he lives, but across the street, he owns that land, yeah, right in there. So he's got access, like, right across from his house and all of that, to get to access his land. Well, Schmuster's back there too, is he, huh? Yeah, he's on the other corner, he's, he's not, the alley doesn't go through his property, not this alley.
He's on the east side of Washington, right?
What was that?
Sclosure is on the east side of Washington, correct?
Yes. Yes. And then, everybody on the alley signed it except for Birdsville's, that own property on it. And Mr. Birdsville didn't want to sign it, so, you know, and that's his right, so, anyway. Like, it was offered to him, I went down and talked to him about it. And in, in all reality, the alley isn't even there. You know, I mean, there's not, there's not a, a physical alley going through there. You know, I own both lots on both sides where he's pointing now. And I, you know, I have, I play farmer on that little piece there, you know, till it up and try to grow something. I haven't had much luck, but I'm trying, you know? But I mean, right now, someone could just like drive right through, through my property if they want, legally, you know? And that's all I'm trying to do, is just clean that up, you know, and I mean, I don't want anybody driving through there. And, uh, you know, the same with Washington, it's just a, it's a cleanup more than anything else, in my opinion. Uh, the county does nothing with that road, they don't allow it, they don't grade it, they don't do anything. So. You know, so in my opinion, the county has basically already abandoned it.
So you can't even go through Washington all the way?
No. No. Go, go down to where the county road ties into Washington. Yeah, the other end. Northern? Yeah, well, I was gonna be, yeah, that's kind of a dark picture, but, you know, there's a whole bunch of junk in the roadway that he, and Gerard's plugged, they plugged it up for, on purpose, because he had, you know, he had some old cars and stuff in that junkyard. People were in there stealing the in-lums off of him, and, you know, shit like that, so, he's, he's plugged it all up. he's plugged it all up.
That's looking south on Washington.
Yeah, that's the county road looking down Washington towards my place.
You're on the side of caution to make sure that we're doing everything right, I mean, we should probably open it up to a public, through a public hearing, and probably do it next month, and if nobody disputes it, or if the dispute is negligible and rhythm doesn't, you know...
On the alleyway.
Right, counter the argument, then I think you fulfill the, because if you go through and you close this, and you have more than one person that's involved that doesn't want it, now all of a sudden you've got to reopen it, and you're just way too hasty with it, so, if it's been, if this has been open for a hundred years, I think waiting another month to close it's probably not going to work, just a... Well, I feel like you should just do both of them, because whoever, whoever is not a part of this process, who didn't know about the signature, or maybe didn't realize this process was going on right now...
Everybody knows what's going on.
Well, right, but I'm just saying, it's, the proper process for ourselves is to offer it out in the paper, maybe contact some of the lay, the landowners, and make sure everybody knows about it, and then after that process...
Oh, both of them?
I'd say, I'd say so, just to be right and fair with the news. I think that would just be the right way to do it, and if we come to a conclusion after that, then shut it down, and if it seems like all of a sudden you get two or three landowners in here, suddenly change their mind, at least you aren't through the process and did it right, so...
So can, can one person in, or can one person delete, you know, shut the whole thing down?
I don't know, I guess that's up to the commissioners, if that one person's testimony is enough to change their mind, I guess, I, I know precedents usually kind of dictates that if someone needs access, that's what the access was created for, so it's, I mean, if one person is just fighting it, and they feel like their argument is just to fight it, the commissioners could overrule them, at the same time, if that one person has a legitimate reason to keep it open, then, you know, the commissioners could rule in that way too, but the proper process is to go through the hearing process and allow everybody to speak, and then, after that, we have the petitions, we know what's going on, if those folks choose not to come, or, or don't testify, then the process follows through that way, and then, at least we can't have someone coming up later and saying, oh, you never gave me the chance to speak, so, I feel like that's the proper way to do it. Anybody else have a problem with that? No? I think that's right. So I'd say what we'll do is, I think the proper process would be to provide notice in the paper, probably, Joe?
Well...
Or contact the landowner, what's the proper...
The notice is supposed to be provided personally, so...
So every adjoining landowner, basically, even the people on this petition, should probably receive notice, I guess, if there's a public hearing?
It wouldn't hurt, it's not required, that doesn't mean we can't provide a notice.
It's not a very long list, since it is ten minutes, not, it's probably cheaper to do that paperwork than to start putting it in the newspapers, so, I suppose the proper process would be to identify every adjacent landowner there and send them notice and, and tell them that we're going to have a hearing set for, probably, ten o'clock next month?
Sounds good, I can draft that notice.
So that allows time for immediate business, and then we can hold the public hearing at ten o'clock?
Well, they're old timers, they still own some of their lots. Mr. Birdsville, okay, Mr. Birdsville was born and raised in that town, when it was still a town here, he's the only one, but we get, like, Memorial Day weekend is big, and, you know, there'll be ten cars that'll come through by my place, and they, you know, and they're looking, and they're all people that were born and raised in that town, you know?
So I'd say set notice for ten o'clock on March 7th, I believe that is the next commissioner meeting, the next regular meeting, is that right? So ten o'clock, March 7th, we'll contact the adjacent landowners, we'll have a short hearing, can't imagine I'll take that much time, and we'll solve it then, okay?
All right.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, guys. And so then I don't need to do anything, you're, you're going to take care of it.
No, we'll, we'll either, somebody in the courthouse, whatever office is proper, will provide notice and we'll host the hearing, so I guess show up to the next hearing would be the proper way. Thanks, Mike.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, Marlis, is that phone call still happening, even though we're a little late?
He just called and I told him, I took his number down.
Okay, so we'll call him, okay, I think we can handle that.
He wants to break.
Well, we might as well, let's just stay on task here. There should be a letter in the package describing the next agenda item, which is, EJAS Khan by telephone with permission to film at the court. Hi, is, is it EJAS?
Yes, this is Dave.
Okay, EJAS, this is Aaron Magrum, the chairman of the Emmens County Commission, you are now on speakerphone with the Emmens County Commission, and you're on the agenda, we're a little bit late, apologies for that, and the floor is yours to talk about what you want on the agenda.
Great, thank you so much, and no apologies needed, everybody, I'm trying to save myself. So, I am ready, we're trying to film our proposal in, in, not difficult, it's one thing, and, and, and the scene that I was hoping to use this forest, your historical justice, I don't know if you know that, is, um, really, has to ultimately, so, that'd be possible for me to do the film, but, if I can film there before, you know, which is, out on, and on, I can send Google Play, so, before the event, and this is my second one, and I'm hoping to get some help from the county.
Okay, have you filmed in the courthouse before, EJAS?
Uh, no, I haven't, I have not filmed in the courthouse before, the last time I filmed, I filmed it in, in the D, it falls to go near the ranch.
Okay. Sheriff Sanders, do you have any input, kind of as the chief of security for the courthouse or anything?
My only concern would be any disruption to environmental business practices during business hours, that will be the issue there. If, if the request was for after business hour begins, then we're going to have to provide somebody here, obviously, to oversee that project.
Okay, it says in your letter here that you would also work off hours, EJAS, is that, is that correct?
I think, you know, I'll, I'll work anytime with, possible with the county, so this way I can make sure that I'm not disturbing anyone's timings, and I also get what I would like to get, so, if you say yes, then I will work off hours.
Opinions by the commissioners?
As long as it doesn't interfere with anything, yeah.
So then the question would be, are you there, is the sheriff's department going to provide someone to kind of...
There's going to be a cost for that, if I have to assign somebody for four hours, half a day, a year, for that specific reason, because, then somebody has to pay that, there would be a cost for that.
They're not coming to your house, are they, EJAS? My complicated scenario, anyway, I guess, just speaking for myself here, I respect the fact that you want to film here, and I think that's great, but I, I just don't know if I really see a benefit to using the courthouse, I guess that's my opinion, I, I understand you, you might need a staging point for that, but I, I don't know if it's really just something that's really beneficial for the county or the courthouse to use, and so I, I guess my opinion of it, with all due respect, is I just, I just don't think it's necessary to utilize the courthouse for filming. That being said, I'm just one person, I, I don't, I don't have any issue with anything you want to do, other than that, I just, I don't feel like courthouse is the proper place to do something like that, so...
Will I be able to film outside the courthouse?
I guess with that, I don't know if there's really anything to probably restrict that, so I, I would say, no, I don't think there'd be a problem with that, other than, you know, with you being on, you know, that's private, it's public property in a sense, I don't know if we really have a filming permit or anything like that, but I, I probably don't see, I don't see any issue with that, Joe, was there any kind of...
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I mean, there's really no legal issue that we see, but, I guess with the commissioners, I mean, I am just one commissioner, I mean, does anybody else have an opinion, or what's your thoughts?
No, it was just for the outside.
No, I'd be for the inside of the courthouse, they want to use the, they want to use kind of the main...
Yeah, as soon as you come into the courthouse, there's a bench, I believe, on the left-hand side, and that's all I wanted to film, was two people sitting on that bench, and they get up and they walk outside, it'll be minimum crew, it's going to be myself and, and someone holding the boom, just to record the dialogue, and once they walk outside, we'll be filming outside. But if it's a hindrance to people's work, and if it's a hindrance and it's not beneficial for anything, then I, you know, whatever you decide is what you're doing.
You guys' opinions?
It's going to be, I always does bother you.
Well, sorry.
You there to patrol this, I really have to, you said, let me start apart?
Outside the courthouse.
Outside.
Outside the courthouse, I don't think there's any issues, it's whether or not we want it inside the courthouse.
If it's inside the courthouse, it's just going to do, just considering that bench going out, it's not going to really, it shouldn't really interfere with too...
Well, the only interference would be, like Sheriff Sanders said, if there's going to be someone on site, and then obviously there'd be some kind of a, some kind of a cost to that, I mean, if we're going to have someone here for three to four hours, I, I feel like that would be something that should be reimbursed by this, by this film deal, would you have a problem with that, EJAS?
No, I'm absolutely agree with that.
If, if we give access to the courthouse after hours, somebody has to be...
Right, he, he might be able to do it during the day, right?
Well, I think, right, the big thing with the day is, I mean, especially in that corridor, you have DMV, you have the auditor's office, I mean, that's probably the busiest part of the courthouse, is that left turn, so if you're going to utilize that spot, I think you should do it after hours, so if you're going to do it after hours, we should probably have a deputy on site, and that cost should be reimbursed, I mean, that's, I mean, are you guys in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then, with that, EJAS, I would just have you coordinate with our sheriff, Sheriff Sanders?
I would send an email, and we would correspond with that.
Yeah, and then he could, he'd be able to tell you the costs associated with providing a deputy there for the after-hours work, and then, and you guys could go from there, then the commissioners appear not to have a problem, so...
Okay.
Okay.
I think that would be wonderful, I really appreciate everybody's time and, and help, thank you so much.
Okay.
And Gary, I really appreciate your help, thank you, thank you.
Okay, well, yeah, Gary will be looking forward to hear from you.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, bye. Next item on the agenda would be Anita Ibach with the new hire, back on track.
I have so many thoughts, Josh?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know, you guys, I'm sure Aaron does, or how many of you follow the legislature, that bill 2277, where they want to move all clerk of courts to state employees? What a lot of the counties are doing is they're having their commissioners sign a resolution, but it'd be something you'd have to vote on to see if you either want to keep the clerk of court as a county employee, or if you wanna, are fine with them, go and have a state employee. That sheet kind of explains that you would lose control over our office, and my personal opinion is, gives me that, I think it's just a way in the future for them to shut down small counties, their offices, so, I'm not sure, if you vote on and approve that resolution, I would only need Aaron to sign it, and Marlis as auditor. So, I'm just, a lot of the other counties had their commissioners signing it, because Chief Jensen, he's the one pushing the bill, he says that, he hasn't talked to a lot of the commissioners yet, that he wants to get their opinion, but he thinks that all the commissioners are going to go along with this, so the clerks are trying to get you guys, the commissioners, to sign the resolution, and then file it with the committee, the senate committee, to show, excuse me, to show that you guys are either on, with them, on board, or that you oppose it. So I just wanted to present this resolution to you guys to see what your opinion is on it, because I know when Al Schmidt was still here, then already they were trying to make all clerk of courts, the super seven is what they called them, so there had only been seven offices of the whole state, so I don't know if this is what they're leaning towards again or not, so...
I think the idea of the super counties has been brought up more than once, but I feel like it does a great disservice to the rural, the rural areas, because the super seven, super eight counties are all going to be eight big cities, and then, you know, it's so...
And this will be a lot like their social services, where you're not going to have, like, my office then would go to a deputy clerk supervisor, and you would be a clerk of court no more, they would only have their, I'm not sure if it's six or seven clerk of courts in the whole state, so, to me, it's just like they're falling back on what it used to be.
So, in the end, are we going to have any patrol of it anyway?
Oh, yeah, if we stay contracted, it'll be like it always has been for the last, what is it, thirty, twenty-eight or thirty-eight years, it's been like this, and it's been working, it's been working good, so, but the state just wants control over all the clerk of courts.
Well, that's what I mean, you think they're eventually going to take control of it all, anyway.
Eventually, I think they'll make it a mandate, but for now, you know...
Yeah, I think the person, you know, that's the thing, I think, but to see, whenever they move forward with it, let them to do it, I, in my opinion, we should stay the way it is now.
As long as we can, bro.
As long as we can, yeah.
Yeah, I know it is passed the senate committee a five to two in favor, so, but we're trying to push so that it doesn't pass completely, I mean, it started as a senate, it still has to go over to the house.
Well, I think if you want to compare it to the social services, I mean, I'm on that board, I think it's an efficient board for how it was created, I don't think it's as efficient as when some of the counties ran it, I think, they took the inefficiencies of some counties and efficiencies of others and kind of molded it, I, I think the problem when you take county offices and put them at the state level is you create consistency, but I don't think you truly create efficiency, and you can have efficient groups inside of that, but it's still not as efficient as if the counties ran it, at least in my opinion, like with social services, I, I feel like, you know, Michelle does a good job, and the board manages as we are controlled now, but I don't feel like it was any better, especially for Emmens County, than if we just had our own social services, so I think, I agree with Anita on, on this too, I think, I think we should try and keep it at the county level, and I've expressed that I've used our legislators too, and hope that they follow through.
And where we're kind of running into a dilemma too, is a lot of your small counties are both clerk and recorder, so if they do pass it, and the clerks go to state, you have to split out the offices again, so, because the recorder can't be doing clerk work like they do now.
So we need a motion for this?
Yeah, well, we would want to, if we were going to approve this resolution, to sign it and send it forward, I think we'd have to approve it as a board, so, I guess if you approve the resolution, I'll entertain a motion to approve table or deny the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Questionnaire, who makes a motion to approve this resolution, which is opposing legislation, making Emmens County's clerk of courts office a state office, is there a second to that motion?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Commissioner Culver, so any more discussion on the resolution? Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution approved and signed.
Okay, and then, with the new hire coming on the budget, I totally spaced out budgeting for insurance, perks, and all of the benefits, so I'll probably have to eventually, once I have the gal hired, or die...
I was going to say, yeah, you know...
Whoever I hire, once I find out, maybe their marriage, spouse has insurance that they don't need insurance, they don't have to worry about it, but, I don't think it's going to be a problem, because I have budgeted, I budgeted her six months of salary, and I think we're over in need three, so, and then same with Karen, when she retires, I forgot to budget for undermislification and sick leave, that gets reimbursed, so, I won't have to do it now, but I'll have to do the amendment later. So I won't have to do it now, but I'll have to do the amendment later. And I've got the ball rolling with the new hire. It'll be in the paper this week and next week. Cut-off date for applications is the 24th. Interviewed sixth and seventh and start date equal third.
So, in the event that this passes though and this becomes a state office, I mean.
Well, that's why we're trying to push to get a new gal hired. Because this way she will be in the office and if they're in the office, they say that they cannot get rid of them as long as they're in the office.
Right, but I mean, I guess my concern would be is if the state takes it over and they, I mean, if they don't need an employee in that office. I mean, I just wonder if maybe we should almost wait until then.
No, because this gal's replacing me. I'm done the end of June. And Karen will be done later on this year. So we will need a gal in the office to get her turned in.
So you're done the end of June too?
I'm done the end of June. I stepped, I stepped in from Karen.
Everybody's.
She was gonna be first, but I took first place.
Anybody else resigning today? Good lord, okay.
Yeah. So she'll be, so hopefully, and then I ask that my position as the head, that Kathy get appointed. She is very qualified. She knows the recorder side. She's been working here over a year. And, or will be a year on the 22nd, and she has almost sixteen years' experience on the clerk side.
She worked in real accounting.
Mm-hmm. So I would ask that she take over my position as the head, cause Karen really don't want it with her retiring soon. And, um, I ask that she at least gets my salary. Because I am the lowest paid grade, so it doesn't matter. Long as Karen, the low was paid, so it isn't gonna matter.
So you're retiring in June?
The end of June.
And Karen's retiring when?
Later in the fall, maybe. So. Thank you. Thank you, yeah.
Lot of years.
Will be forty-five in April.
That's a long time.
So.
Okay.
So the chancellor's trying to fill out that county's chapter, right?
Not condos, no. I'm filling a deputy in my office. I'm not filling my position.
That position, that position, well, that means we would have to appoint.
Kathy will take my position.
That, we would have, Anita's elected here.
Yes, and right now Kathy is the deputy. She'll step up to the head and this new gal will take over as a deputy.
Right, cause Anita's elected, so she needs to be appointed if she resigns, so.
Yes, so I ask that you appoint Kathy and at least give her my salary. Cause like I said, I'm right now here the longest, but the low was paid, so.
Okay.
So you don't want two employees, you just want one?
Just one for now. When Karen retires, we'll see what the legislature does, if we need another one at the time. So.
Well, that position's, well, it's, yeah, it's being applied for, interviewed, and I don't know if they've hired somebody for that position or not, so. Okay, well, I guess that pretty much sums everything up.
And then that resolution is, you can give it to me?
My was answered.
Okay.
Yeah, I already signed it, so.
Okay, I got it, Anita, I'm here, okay. Thank you.
Next up is wool engineering.
Oh, I can present it, I guess. That's an anecdote here. For further commissioners' wants or wishes, we move forward on doing the Wobom crossing, the Kelch crossing, and also the Culvers on ADA Street. It'd be like by Chloe Mullins, where we had to pump the water.
Oh, yeah, on the Federal aid road, yeah.
On the Federal aid road. So in that packet, we'll start with, uh, we'll start with the Kelch, or the Wobom crossing. And the, the map is just a continuation. We hold the two together, kinda how it rolls.
Oh, I see, yeah.
So one goes for fifty-five mile an hour, that'll bring it up to a fifty-five mile an hour zone. And the other estimate is for twenty-five mile an hour zone. And the color, it's highlighted on those pages, so that when we flip to the second map, that shows what pink correlates with pink on the map. Twenty-five mile an hour one would be the, coordinate it up. Guess we just wanna see if we wanna keep moving forward, which direction we wanna take with it. My suggestion is we do the fifty-five mile an hour one, so we build in the future, instead of trying to slow trucks down and there. It's a little bit more money, but in the end, that's, that's a better, I'll clear it up. John's here, just to add to any of you guys' questions, I guess, you have wool.
Well, I know, I know the main concern that I received with that is, one, the safety of the structure in itself, but then, two, was that we don't leave the hill and the curve the way it is because they felt like it was dangerous, even for the buses. You got planter coming on one way with a tractor, and then you've got a school bus coming, and there's just the site, everything. So with a fifty-five mile an hour, I'm assuming that's gonna increase the site distance and things like that too, that.
Definitely.
So that, I mean, that was almost as big of an issue as the structure itself, as they felt like it's kind of a dangerous piece of road to be there, so.
Well, and this estimate doesn't include on the top of the hill or the south of this, um, there's a couple other curves coming into this valley that we didn't address. I think they're signed for thirty-five right now. Um, I didn't know where it started to stop on this thing.
Right, well, I mean, I think the big thing was especially since you're going kinda down and at a curve. You know, and then especially with the truck too, if you're slowing down, then you're trying to make a hill on the other side. You know, you're trying to shift gears and gain momentum, and then you've got someone coming from the other direction, and so I would say making it.
So you're just trying to straighten out a little more.
Say making it straight and wide and flat would be the best-case scenario, just for, I mean, cause I mean, there's, at least for the foreseeable future, that's gotta be a school bus route, cause I know the families that live back there got younger kids too. So it's, it's not like, oh, a year won't even be a school bus route, probably for the next ten years, it'll even be a route. And on top of that, who knows if that'll change down the road, so. Like I said, if you're gonna go through this project and fix it, you might as well fix it, so it's done. What the.
This was a federal aid project, right?
Well, no, this is not a federal aid project, but this was a project where we were gonna correlate it with our Prairie Dog funds. So we did have some outside funding with that, but, um. I mean, the only question with that too is that it's, looks like it almost doubles the cost on fifty-five mile an hour, so that's, you know.
Three hundred thousand more.
And the only question I have with that though, even then, is if you have other curves that are thirty-five, then trying to make that stretch fifty-five and spending all that money is that's not the way to do it too, though, but. I will say one thing, I don't advocate for the cheapest alternative all the way, because once we're done with this, you're hoping not to touch it for ever. I don't know when that last structure was probably built, the fifties or sixties or something, so I mean, you figure, if it's gonna get sixty years, well, then.
So how much more are they really straightening that out to go to the fifty-five mile an hour?
So we're really not changing the alignment so much, um, it's the vertical. We're cutting through that last pillar that's extremely steep. We're starting way back and cut through it. Right now, I think it's about eleven percent slope at worst, and I think I have it down at like four and a half percent with the fifty-five mile an hour. That's the vertical slope.
So what is it gonna be on the thirty-five, vertical slope?
Uh, or the twenty-five?
Yeah.
Basically, we'll leave it at how it is.
It's basically a twenty-five mile an hour right now, so.
Yeah.
With the twenty-five mile an hour option, you're essentially just replacing the structure and doing a little bit of dirt work. And the fifty-five is where you're basically doing significant work to the road alignment and everything. But one thing I will say too is that's also the main road for our gravel pit, which we're planning on using for the foreseeable future. That mountain, the gravel equipment, the Wobom pit, you know, so, I mean, making it at least the best possible scenario for the trucks is also something to consider too, our own use as well as the residents and the school buses.
Who else is in that pit? Is anybody else own gravel in that pit?
No.
More than approved, it's not even, no.
No.
Okay.
From what I understand, Fisher Industries kind of bought it all up or got the rights to get any gravel pit, cause there was people going in before, so.
Yeah, there's probably some remnant material that either Woboms or Fishers owns.
Yeah.
Other than us, so, I mean, they could sell to the state or to Northern down the road or, you know, but, uh, but yeah. So basically, I mean, your idea, you, you looking for an answer on which, which way to proceed?
Homework video, I guess.
We don't have to get on the Prairie Dog, can we, right?
No, we do have the funds, right, Miles? Or the Prairie Dog, we have at least one dispersion.
We got the one point three.
So we got the full amount, okay, so. And that was the, I will, I guess, counter my own argument, is the fact that the twenty-five mile an hour alternative comes in at about six hundred thousand, which was about what we were hoping. Right, because if we had the one point two, one point three million, we'd be able to do that one and, and the Kelch one that we temporarily dipped with Culvers in hopes to fix that long-term too, and hoping that that would land about six hundred thousand two, and you'd have enough money to cover both projects without dipping too far into the. I mean, if we have to spend a hundred thousand of our own money on top of it to fix it, at least we could, but, right, but I, four hundred thousand is a pretty big leap, and that's gonna eat up a majority of our Prairie Dog funds, which would really handicap us from doing that other project, and I hate to do that, cause.
That'd probably just take it home as well.
Well, that's the thing, I mean, yeah, you're gonna be pushing, I mean, like you said, nine twenty-eight is an estimate, it could be well over a million by the time it's done. And so that, that's quite a bit of money for that, where we could still get it done. The main issue is the structure, I know that. Is there, is there any roadwork that's really gonna be done, other than just to fit the structure in there at the twenty-five mile an hour alternate?
Not much filling in on top of it.
Right.
We're gonna be raising the grade.
But it's not gonna change it much, right?
No. How long will that stretch hit us? Um, for the twenty-five, I think we're talking maybe like five hundred feet.
Yeah, but I suppose on the fifty-five, then I suppose you gotta go back quite a ways to be able to match them.
Yeah, fifty-five were a quarter of a mile long of dirt work.
And for the twenty-five, like five hundred feet?
At most, yeah.
I guess my other question would be is if we could at least get the structure done, if that's something that our road crew could do in the future to try and.
Yeah, it's just.
I mean, it's just so much right now, when you don't even have other projects you wanna do. If you knew you only had one project, you're like, heck with it, let's just burn it all, but I, I mean, I feel like we could maybe do some of that work and try and maybe improve that road bed in the future. I mean, it might be two years down the road, but at least then we could maybe budget for it a little more.
Part of the kicker though with the twenty-five is the box is only, is only gonna be long enough to meet the twenty-five mile an hour design speed.
Oh, so it's a different box?
It's a shorter box, the alignment's slightly changed too.
Sure.
Cause there's less fill on top of the box also.
Well, and I guess I don't mean make it fifty-five, but I'm just saying, try and, I know the alignment and some of that is what folks would really like to get changed too, and that.
So what if you put the bigger box in, now, how much more would that cost?
That could be an option too, um. I mean, you could probably split the difference, maybe seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Without that?
Bigger box.
Put, yeah, with the bigger box, so it'd be designed for fifty-five, but most of the dirt work would be completed right now.
But then the nice part with that is that you could do the fifty-five down the road, maybe a part of another project, you get Prairie Dog funds later, our, our own road. I mean, right, I like that idea a lot.
I think I'd rather, you'd always have to stick that small one in there and then.
I don't wanna handicap this project based on short-term money, right, cause I, I, I know the people that have spoken, I mean, the alignment is a big issue as well. I mean, the structures, if they got the structure done, I think a lot of them would be happy. But I think they'd still be disappointed if we didn't do something to the road, but that being said, if we set a structure that would allow us that in the future.
To do that in the future.
I think if other funds came available, or if it worked out for our guys to start doing it, the five-year plan could be to get it that way. That way we don't use all these funds on one project, I think that would be a wise.
I'd rather do it down here.
I kinda feel like that would be a good move, and it gives us.
What are your feelings as the engineer? Probably go with the big box?
Um, yeah, I.
So it doesn't hinder you in the future, right?
I think at that eleven percent slope, it just, it's not good. But as long as we're maybe working towards fixing it in the future, I think that would be okay, that's what I think.
I think fixing it would definitely, but like I said, I'd really like to possibly get one other project done with these funds if we could. Because we don't know if we'll get these funds again. We may get them the next session, you have no idea, but.
So Chairman, there was two, um, uh, Prairie Dog that came through, okay, the one was one point three million.
Yeah.
And then the other Prairie Dog money that came through was so much per township.
That was for the townships.
And then it was like nine thousand something per township, so there was like another four hundred thousand that I put into that Prairie Dog company.
So if you look at those sheets that I have the funds on there, look. Sure.
Well, yeah, really, I suppose, yeah, I didn't, cause that was pretty individual townships, but.
I established a new fund for that, so I think it's, one point three was the first distribution that came out. And just last week, they did another four hundred and some thousand, and Kathy got nine thousand something out of it.
So we got one organized, unorganized county, right?
Right.
So is that, did they get her?
Yes, I sent them their money, and then the rest of its date, I put in there, Karen.
Yeah.
The one organized township scan, or one with the northeast corner?
Yep.
There's just one, I mean.
That's the only organized township.
It was, either is that something like, you could fix that road down the way, something like that?
Possibly, you have it in the elements, but. Stuff like that, we always just bring in stuff like that, and, I mean, there'll probably have to be a little bit more engineering on that to make sure we're doing it.
Should find it, Gary.
A little alignment, right, and stuff like that, but.
How much is in there?
Well, one, one point four eight six.
No, the Prairie Dog projects here would be, uh, one point five two six. But then the other, like, you.
Well, you're gonna need dirt on top of that box, right? You can go beyond our box, right?
Yep.
So you can pull some off that slope and pull material out into the box, and you've got the gravel reserves right to you, right by you.
I had figured bringing in barrel with the twenty-five mile an hour, um, option. That slope, I mean, it's, it worked out, either do the fifty-five or the twenty-five. Cause by the time you take some of the slope, you might as well just, just take most of it. I, I could look at taking some of it, just to get an arm out of it, or just enough to fill on top of the box.
How much are two, we need on top of the box, you say?
It's.
What is the square?
There's maybe like total of three feet on top of it, two, four, five, three, four, three.
It's all you need, it's three feet of dirt.
Yeah, so I had figured roughly twenty-two hundred feet variance for the twenty-five mile an hour option.
Who gets the job of taking out that old waterway, the waterway itself?
Whoever bids the project, the contractor.
Yeah, this will go out to bids, just like any other project, I guess. Well, yeah, and the only thing to remember though is these are just your estimates, I mean, the bids could come in way higher.
Yeah.
Or, well, I wouldn't say way less, but slightly less, more likely way more than slightly less, if I'm just, but it's hard to say. One thing I can say is, with Prairie Dog funds available, it's probably gonna be a busy year. So getting contractors could be an issue too, so that's why, the reason why we wanted to push forward, trying to get on the list for getting boxes and getting other things too. Do you think?
Can you get a local contractor to cut that, that slope, like Russ Law or somebody?
Well, I, I think you could, because it's not a federal aid project, I mean, you'd still wanna bid it, obviously, for the legal reasons, but I don't think you have to go through like the federal aid process.
Right, I know this.
It'd be more of a typical, you submit a packet for bids and probably it would close bidding, and then pick your lowest bidder at the meeting, you know. That's the way we do it, like with gravel crushing and other projects, so I don't think you have to go through the entire federal aid process, cause it's not that. But that being said too, the Prairie Dog might have some, you know, I mean, right, I mean, there might be some rules, I, I.
We would have bid it out locally.
Right.
The contractor there would do all the work, whoever gets the lowest bid. Um, just the timing on these two is, we did not, we were not able to get the environmental work done last fall, just because of that snow. So we're looking at probably May to start that stuff, um, so we're not gonna be able to bid this, this year. So we're not gonna be able to bid this, this year. At, at best, we're over for like.
Bid in November and probably work to start in following spring or something, then, or hopefully, unless it was a really nice weather stretch.
I mean, there is so much work out there right now for structures.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we can get some good bids.
Sure.
What are you, what are you guys feeling about?
Well, what I'm wondering is can you put out a bid packet for both alternates? Like, could you go forward with both alternates and bid them both and then choose later? Would that be possible?
It would be, um, yeah, it's.
I mean, rather than make the decision now what you wanna do, maybe just have a bid of both. I mean, you might, it might be a big enough project that you attract a different contractor, I mean, there's a variety of different things. And if it comes out like you think, where it's like, oh yeah, the 55 is just way higher, does order. Maybe if you bid all of these, maybe somebody comes in that wants to do all of them or, you know, a couple of them, like if.
Right.
And you know, I mean, I would say if anything, you'd almost put them all out for bids, is that even reasonable or?
I would recommend selecting an option because it's the same kind of work for both options, so.
Sure. I guess the troublesome part with me is if you, this number might not be the number you end up building the project for. So if you're already cutting it close or going over what you think your funding is available, and then you find out it goes even over that again, now you're in a 300, 400,000 dollar hole, is that money we're willing to spend on those projects? Cause we really haven't budgeted that much. I mean, we do have some funding available for projects. Like I said, you're, you're a hundred thousand off of making both of them go, we could probably utilize it, but now you're half a million off of it. Now you gotta choose one or the other or do that, so in that respect, I think I like the idea of putting in the big culvert on the braddock one. You have the option down the road to fix the alignment yourself, or you wanna hire it done, if there's more funding, so, and then.
But you have that big one, put it, you put that, where, where were you gonna get the borrow from? Anyway.
Well, normally we would leave it up to the contractor. Um, I could look at, um, possibly cutting down some of that hill just to get enough borrow.
Because you are talking about realigning anything anyway, right? Just taking the slope out of that?
Pretty much, yeah. The 25 doesn't really take the slope off of it though.
Yes.
That bad spot with the steep slope that stays with the 25, but I could potentially cut it down a little bit, help a little bit.
I, I think I would manage with that too, put the bigger box in the.
I, I'd say probably stick with the 25 mile an hour dirt work with the 55 box and it gives you the, cause if you go with that small box, then later on you have some funding, you're like, why did we do that?
Right.
Uh, you know, so I would say that would be the plan for the Wool Bomb.
Set it up right.
I think so.
But I'm thinking if they have to haul, haul borrow it, I would think they'd cut down the hill or would be better anyway, you know?
Yeah, that's cool.
Well, and I, I will say one thing, knowing the guys, the folks that own the land around there, they know we're, we're putting in a new structure and we need a little help. I think people would be like, hey, come steal some dirt off my hill or cut my ditch out or I, I think people, cause they want that structure.
No, no, but I'm just saying.
And even with that gravel pit close by, there's probably some opportunity for some material there. There's a lot of material around there, I would think a guy could find something to, you know, I mean, I, I think, I think that would, I think finding borrow material would probably be reasonable to do though, I think. So I would say, is that fair enough then for the Wool Bomb one is to go with the 25 alternate, but go with the 55 mile an hour box size?
Yeah, we can do that.
I think, I think that's probably the proper way to go. Dave?
But you can't start, it won't be a project for this coming summer.
No.
Is there a way a guy could kick that ahead a little bit so it would?
So right now, with any DOT bill means anything we have bid right now for a structure through the DOT, we're pretty much putting on the end of 2024 to be completed. Cause we don't even think they're gonna get, the boxes aren't even gonna get constructed this year. Much less haul to the site and put it.
So even if you got a dirt contractor to bid it and was ready to start, you're probably short in the structure.
We, yeah, we'd probably put the completion at the end of 24 as of today.
Because of the box culvert, right? Well, I think then we definitely need to at least keep moving, so we're towards the front of the list or middle of the pack at least, so we can get on the live list for a box. Maybe things clear up and one would come sooner, like you said, if you leave that, that ending date a little open, then it can hopefully get done, maybe soon.
Yeah.
Okay? And then the, uh, the other alternative that's east of late, I guess there's only one option for the one east of late tonight.
Correct.
The Kelch Crossing, whatever we call it or whatever those.
Well, we could, you wanna, well, it doesn't matter what order we do them in, so, yeah, you wanna talk about?
Well, since we're talking box culverts, I guess let's just stay on that.
You place steel culverts out there, right, one or two on the Kelch Crossing?
Two.
Okay, how big a diameter?
84 inch.
Okay, you wanna put, whether to put a cement box in it?
Well, that was kind of the whole pro, the whole plan or the whole thought process or the whole planning process was we were gonna get them, that road open that fall, or last fall, and then keep proceeding with this, the permanent fix with it, but, this spring will be a good telltale sign of what's gonna happen, you know, because they have so much snow in them. Depending on the, the spring runoff we get, if they might hold. And if they hold, then we really need to keep venturing down the box culvert route, you know? Cause if they're holding, the road's good and everything like that, so, um, I know when, when they don't have a road. Well, it gets to be a problem and you're, you're more worried about getting access and now that they have access, then it's not doomsday, you know, so.
Well, and on top of access, though, it is Beaver Creek, so we need to make sure that we're, you know, that we're allowing that creek to flow properly too. You know, the, the temporary culverts, I mean, I mean, that could cause an issue down the road or something, you know, I mean.
Well, there was a water study done on that, those culverts.
So they're properly sized for a specific event, but.
Yeah.
Right, I mean.
They do what, 25 year on those, on the culverts? The road would overtop, I think, yeah, I believe it's like a two year event.
Right. So I mean, it is a temporary fix, so I mean, the, the idea behind it was a temporary fix too, so yeah. But even with this project, I mean, if, if it didn't work out, like if we bid it and then all of a sudden the bids come out way high, I mean, we can throw it out too, I mean, it's not like you just have to follow through, cause you bid it out, so. If, in the meantime, if it seems like it held a pretty good event, we run out of funds or the bids are coming too high, we could postpone it for later too. That one is 712,000 is the engineer's estimate basically?
Yeah.
So how do they do that if you, uh, if you order a culvert or a pre-cast thing and we backed out on the deal?
So we wouldn't order the culvert, that'd be the contractor, we would bid out the project and the contractor would order the box culvert. Um, you're running issues if we, if the company purchased it, let's say the culvert gets delivered, something gets damaged, um, which happens quite frequently, uh, who has to pay to repair it? If it's all on the contractor, something gets broken during construction, they gotta go fix it.
So I mean, basically you wouldn't pull out of a culvert, you would just basically award the bid or not, once you awarded the bid, you're pretty much committed then, so.
Yeah, but you said, you said box culverts are out a year, you take a whole year to get them, so.
Yeah.
Take and get this chat out next year, and is that gonna take another whole year to get that culvert?
Potentially, yes.
That's why you do wanna move forward and try and award bids as soon as possible too, so that they know what they're up against, so they can get on the list to get ordered too, so.
So do we wanna move forward with the Kelch Crossing then and just have them, get a bid package ready and get it bid out?
Probably think so, I think you have to move forward with both of them at least and see how things go. If things, things are either gonna clear up or get muddier in the near future too, and then you'll know what you're up against too. I'd say at this point, might as well move forward and vote them, yeah, so.
Hey, and then the last item, I guess we have to talk about, for wool areas, 88th Street, Sanger Lake. That's where we pump the water, so there's two alternatives, there's just extending the two pipes. Um, or there's a grade raise on there because that is narrow, that's why we have all those object markers up. It's never, under the emergency grade raise, that's what we did, that's what they did, is put it back and, like a foot and a half, two feet, too narrow. So there's two alternatives there, we have to do a grade raise, like to fix it permanently and forever, for a long time. Or just extend the two pipes so we can, that water will flow on its own, so we don't have to.
Which they should have done right away, right? Extended that pipe before they did that grade raise.
Well, when you're in an emergency grade raise, they don't, you have to do certain things, so.
So they're gonna have to box, you're gonna have to box it, will you not? And then pump the water?
What's that?
You gotta box it with a steel box and pump the water up, extend these culverts?
No, they probably build, uh, earthen copper dams.
Okay.
On both sides of it?
Good.
Yeah, so that process is getting bid out, we don't have the time or the resources.
Is any of this qualified in federal aid funding then, since it's not, I mean, we already got our emergency grade raise, so.
That's something we can look into.
Okay. But right now, these estimates are basically for us paying for it right now, right? There's no, no federal aid cost here in this, at this point?
They can't put an equalizer culvert down, they can put it in there or not?
They can't, why?
Put an equalizer culvert down?
Well, that's what these two are doing, I mean, that's the same amount of work really to put a culvert in there as it is to extend the ones that are in there. So, because those two, the two that we're gonna extend, there's actually three in there, but as those, the two will make do, or it'll be sufficient enough, so they're already in there, we just have to take the end sections off and put another section on there and then get them out further enough, so. I would say the workload would be down much less if we tried to dig in a new one.
Really? I mean, not even a guy had to go down that far, I mean, just put them down enough that it equalizes the lake. Down the road, if it ever dries out, maybe they're accessible without doing all those buildings up.
You think it's just, just as cheap to have a new culvert placed in that road and open that up to place a new culvert in rather than extend them? The cost is about the same.
It's about the same, um, to extend with concrete versus putting in a new steel pipe at the same elevations. Cause we are extending these concrete one quite a bit. We're, if we bid it out with the pipe option, we would bid both options to extend the existing pipe or to put all new pipe in.
But then you're, you're going, you're talking all the way down to the bottom then, right?
Yeah, right now the water's about seven feet at most.
So, I mean, why, why couldn't they do it so they could just, maybe five years that lake will dry out? Wouldn't they just put an equalizer in there for a few years or what?
I mean, technically you could, it would be, uh, like these two 60s would be sized for the 25 year event. And we would extend it enough, even if we're just extending the pipe for a future grade raise as I have designed.
Is there an issue also out of Shwan Lake? Duchesne Berg had contacted me.
Yeah, there, well, there's talk with the water board that they're gonna put a plate in or something like that.
Cause it got closed up, he said they did a great, you know, list.
They did the same thing that, well, I, I don't know about the culverts, we didn't have any issues over this, this spring, like they. Like at Sanger Lake here, that one side was quite a bit higher than the other, so it wasn't flowing, that one didn't do that, to my knowledge, so that's funny.
And the one at Sanger Lake, is that plugged or closed up with the buildup on the north side only or on the south side also?
We're not on the north side, I would assume that they're on both sides, we just, this fall we finally, we were able to find them and realized they were too short. So when they ripped wrapped, they must have, and then it's lost, you know, a little bit, so sloughed in there, they were just too short, so. So we can see if there's special funding, but I know that when we're doing that chip seal in the spring, there's talk that we borrowed ahead quite a bit, so.
Right, that's, I would just, but you know, just for the sake of discussion, since it is a federal aid road, if that was, you know, part of the conversation, but like you said, if there, our balance is already borrowed ahead for the projects and you're kinda running short for this one, so.
There was a lot of complaints on that road with those markers, for you guys as a road crew, you can't push it out.
It makes it tougher for us, but you're, uh, 1.4 million dollars more to do a grade raise than it is to do the culvert extensions now, so.
Well, to do a grade raise, so that, that's not consulting either, really.
Cause. Well, that pipe would get extended then, and then they could shut, and that would be done.
Oh, that would, okay.
Either way, they would extend the pipes, it's just if we did it this way, they wouldn't really do anything to the road bed other than repair it after the culverts. Or done this one is, they do the same culverts, but then they'd also widen the roads, open it out, you know? So that's why the difference of 1.4 million dollars, 1.35 million dollars, so. For 1.3 million dollars, I'll take a few complaints from the road grader operator, but no offense, Skylar.
No, but, I mean, we're just looking, cause we can't, we can't pump it every year.
No, and I, I, the problem you have with even like an equalizer culvert too is that's not really the proper way of, like you said, if you don't get your culvert sized to the proper events and meeting your federal aid requirements, if it does overtop again, then you're on your own probably again too, if you don't. You know, the reason them culverts were designed for that size was to handle a certain flow of water. If you don't fix that issue and then we go over the top again, which it could happen, cause obviously the culverts are plugged, now you're on your own to do another grade raise. So that's where compliance with the federal aid will at least qualify for another emergency grade raise or another, I mean, you're pretty much just, you're pretty much taking yourself out of the playbook if you don't follow the rules, so. So I would say you probably have to do at least the pipe alternative. I mean, I don't know what other choice you really have, like you said, you're gonna be pumping and doing a bunch of other stuff and putting a bunch of Band-Aids on it and you could run into a real problem down the road. Not to mention, if you do this project, it also allows you to do the grade raise down the road, cause if you have the culverts in place with the right length and the right size, then that part's done for the future, if you do fix the road the right way, or whatever you wanna call it, so. You would put this out for bids too, right?
Yeah, we don't have.
That's too big of a project, yeah.
So we can look into the federal funding on it too.
Right, yeah, and I mean, like you said, it makes sense what you're talking about, I just know with that one, because since we got funding on the grade raise and stuff too, if that was a part of it. But I know they don't fund everything, you know, if you do a certain project like this pipe, they might say, ah, it doesn't count too, you pay for that on your own, so I just was curious with that. But whether it's funding or not, we probably still have to get it done, so. I mean, I would say you'd have to at least put that out for bids, I think the other one, the grade raise right now, that's just, I mean, even at, even if they would fund it, I mean, we'd have to come up with roughly 20% odd, so that would be, my brain's not quite working right now. 320,000, 350,000 dollars of our own too, so I mean, for that, you could pay cash through the culverts now and wait it out a little bit and see if it gets better to widen that later or something, of course, it might be cheaper than neither, but.
Maybe.
Yeah, but, uh, but yeah. So I would, I guess my opinion would be to try to put that out for bids as well, get them culverts fixed before we run into a bigger problem down the road.
Cause, I mean, even, we're probably gonna have to pump it this year, cause even, I mean, I, the time to do it and everything, we won't probably get a contractor.
Right, you probably don't wanna start on something like that right away in the spring, typically that's your highest.
Well, I don't even think we can get it done that early.
Right, but typically you'd probably wanna do that in a summer fall type scenario where the water's at its lowest.
And they're concrete, I don't know how fast they're making concrete pipes.
Same issue.
I know they're, concrete's, there's only a few plants that do this stuff, so. But I think we should get the ball, keep going with it then, so you wanna put all three out or get bid packages ready for all three then when we get?
I think we should and then see where the bids come in, if they just come in astronomically high where we can't do them, then we'll have to rethink it. And if they come in maybe a little lower or something, then it's a little more doubtful that we do them, I guess, so. So I'd say yes.
Yeah.
That's right, don't know until you put them out for bids, I guess, so.
Put them out right now.
So I'd say we're doing the, the pipe alternate bid on 88th, we're doing the Kelch Crossing, Kelch Culvert bid, and then we're doing the Wool Bomb with the 55 mile an hour culvert size, but the 25 mile an hour design. Fair?
Good.
Okay. But with that, I think we will adjourn for lunch, come back at 1 o'clock.